All right, good evening, folks. It's 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you'll please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Varela.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Meroz.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
You can all rejoice, I am here.
And Mayor Harmison.
Here. We do have a quorum, a full house tonight. Good to see everybody. All right, we're gonna start off with citizens' communication. This is the time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communication section of the agenda. The board of Alderman will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board of Alderman, welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is anyone here who'd like to speak to the board? All right, seeing none. And before we move on to the approval of the consent agenda, I'm gonna turn this over to our city minister, Devon Lake, for a couple of service awards, please.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. We have two service awards this evening. The first one, I would like to call Keegan Powers forward. Keegan's been with the city for five years, and she was just promoted to deputy city clerk.
Awesome.
So, we would like to congratulate you for your five years, and we appreciate your service to the city.
Thank you.
Chief, are you?
He's on his way in.
Okay.
He's running a little behind.
Okay.
I tried to photobomb that last one. I don't know if I got in there or not.
Do you wanna go ahead and do the consent agenda, and maybe he'll?
That'll be fine, yes. All right, has the board had a chance to read the minutes of the Alderman meeting, February 20, 2025, and the bill's list from March 6, 2025? And do I have any comments or questions or corrections on those? Seeing those, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. We're just gonna hang out for a minute here. He's on his way.
Yep, looks like he should be here, according to AVL any moment.
Where are you at, Alderman Rucker?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
I just realized I had it muted.
There we go.
I've got it muted 'cause the grandbabies may make some noise.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a request?
Alderman Osteen, yes, you certainly can.
Kind of unorthodox, but I wanted to, while I know he's here, make some comments regarding Zach Wilburn. If we could please get him to return to the room. I just didn't think he would stay for the entire meeting 'cause it is a limpy one. Matt's here.
So, our second service award tonight is to Sergeant Schwinn. He has been here for 30 years.
What?
Yeah. So, we wanna thank you for your service to the city. We wanna congratulate you for all of those years. There you go.
Awesome.
Alderman Osteen, would you like to finish while Zach's still here?
Please. I know this is unorthodox. These were comments I intended to make at the end of the session when we did the Alderman communications. But I thought, based on timing, I wanna go ahead and get this out of the way. Mr. Zach Wilburn, two things I wanted to say to you. First of all, thank you for being such a good sport with all of the comments I made regarding your hair and your piercings. They were all made in jest. None of those comments were ever malicious. Secondly, though, I wanted to thank you for your service to the city of Osage Beach. You made very positive changes that will endure long after you are gone, not only for yourself, for your employees, your departments, but also for the city of Osage Beach and the citizens. So, I wanted to give you a heartfelt thank you for all that you have done. That's all.
All right, very good. Congratulations to you both, and thank you very much. We're gonna start tonight with unfinished business. We have a fairly lengthy meeting, but I think it should go fairly smooth. We're gonna start with the Bill 2506, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Ordinance Number 24-93, Adopting the 2025 Annual Budget Transfer Funds for Necessary Expenditures for the Replacement of the HVAC System Components. This is the second reading. Is this you, Devon?
No, this is Ron White.
Building official, Ron White.
Sorry about that. And in my defense here, I got a new computer, so I'm still learning how to do this without paper. So, I can see the agenda, but I can't see the little cheat sheet on the side.
Click the arrow.
Oh, no, old business.
Click the arrow, there you go.
Sorry, folks. All right, we're gonna turn this over to the building official, Ron White, please.
Hey, thank you, mayor, members of the board. I have nothing additional to add other than both of the boilers are now up and running, and we're good to go. Fortunately, we got it done just a few days before that really cold spell that we had, the last really cold spell. So, I have nothing additional to add to this and still recommend approval.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Varela, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Very good, second reading passes. Next, we're gonna move on to Bill 2508, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Ordinance Number 24.93, Adopting the 2025 Annual Operating Budget Transfer of Funds Necessary for Expenses and Purchases for an Upgrade Midsize Dump Truck. Would you like to take this one tonight?
I would love to. Thank you, mayor, members of the board. This was presented by Zach at the last meeting. He wants to upgrade, or he wanted to upgrade to a midsize dump truck. So, that requires a budget amendment for $23,678.
Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Very good, second reading, Bill 2508 passes. Next item, we have Bill 2509, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Quit/Claim Deed to WP Ozarks LLC. Second reading, city engineer Drew Bowman.
Don't have anything further to add at this time, unless Cole, you have anything to add? Be happy to answer any questions that there might be.
Nothing for me. If it passed the first time, I hope it'll pass the second.
All right, seeing no comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Varela, do I have a second?
Second. Second. I beat you.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes, that's 'cause mine's delayed.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Very good, second reading, 2509 passes. Next, we'll move on to Bill 2510, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the City Administrator to Sign a Change Form Number Two, Final, for the Osage Beach Parkway Extension Project. Again, city engineer Drew Bowman.
Yes, this is a change order for a total of $857.48, making the revised contract $501,226.78. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Hoffman.
Just from the, when you'd not sat in those, or when I sat on the special road district meeting last week, two weeks ago, whichever it was, does this address what we discussed in that meeting about that driveway opening? Or is that something separate?
That's, yeah, that's completely separate. The, this change order basically revises all of the project quantity amounts to their final amounts. And the main change is that there was a power supply change that was requested by AMRIN, and we complied so that we could be more in line with what AMRIN needed on the project.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else, Alderman Osteen?
This is more a procedural question, and this goes to Devon or to Craig. Is there not a different avenue or process wherein, if there's a minimal contract increase, that it does not need to go before the board? Is there not some jurisprudence?
Because it was a not-to-exceed amount, and this is exceeding the not-to-exceed. I'll just come back to the board.
But there is no leeway for the city administrator to basically sign off on that independently if it's within a certain percentage, or?
I don't know if this one had a force account or not.
This one couldn't have a force account because it was a cost share with MoDOT.
That was, that's right, that was the issue. So, because it was cost share with MoDOT, it didn't have a force account. So, normally, this, we'd have a force account for this. We've also encountered in a couple of other spaces minor contracting that we need to do, and we're gonna be bringing you some, frankly, pretty dumb little stuff in the next, whenever we can get it ready. And with that, we intend to kind of have the bigger discussion about what is the board comfortable with authorizing staff to do without board votes? You know, one's, I think, a police memorandum of understanding, the airport hang releases, stuff like that. So, we're going to try to streamline that, but we also have some things we need to get done in front of you guys, and you'll see what we mean when we say we're looking for authority to execute, to handle small matters without coming to the board.
That was the key point of the question, was streamline the process.
Yes.
Of not having to go before the board, enjoying processes to get board approval, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Very good, second reading, Bill 2510 passes. Next, we have Bill 2511, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Contract with Schulte Supply for the Neptune-Fix Based AMI Platform for an amount not to exceed $116,936.48. Second reading, Devon Lake.
Good evening. This is another presentation from Zach at the last meeting for the automatic meter reading platform through Neptune. This was a budgeted expense. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no comments or questions from the board, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion.
Alderman Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, Bill 2511 passes second reading. Next, we have Bill 2512, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Driveway and Fence Easement for Julia C. Jasma and J. Jasma Trustees of the Julia C. Jasma Revocable Trust dated July 25, 2012, City Attorney Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. This was also presented at the last meeting while I wasn't here, but this is, I think, was obviously explained pretty well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for anyone? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Alderman Meroz, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
All right, second reading, 2512 passes. Next, we have Bill 2514, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, to Execute a Road Relinquishment Agreement for the West Osage Beach Parkway with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. City engineer Drew Bowman.
Have anything to add at this point? I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do recommend approval.
Seeing no questions, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
I got so many X's on this page.
Very good. Bill 2514 passes second reading. Last item of old business is Bill 2515, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Maintenance Agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for a portion of the Key Largo Connector. Drew Bowman again.
Mayor, members of the board, I don't have anything to add at this point, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do recommend approval.
All right, seeing no questions, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Varela got you on your other hair, so we're gonna go with second, Alderman Varela. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Varela.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Meroz.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, very good. Moving on to new business. First item is a resolution, 2025-05, A Resolution of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Stating Facts and Reasons for the Necessity to Amend an Increase in Budget Expenditures for a Fiscal Year 2025 for City Park Maintenance Building Bathroom Edition. City engineer Drew Bowman.
Mayor, members of the board, this is really just a resolution for the ordinance that goes with it. So, I originally forecasted this, the City Park project, the City Park Bathroom Edition project was going to be completed before the end of 2024. And so, the project was left off of the 2025 budget. This is just a resolution to take the bottom line from 2024 and add it to 2025.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen.
I'm curious on the accounting side of this all. Obviously, the project wasn't completed in 2024. Are we putting the total cost for this under the 2025 budget? Or was it already paid partially 2024? So, you're just requesting the carryover amount that's unpaid?
Yes.
And the total amount that's unpaid?
It was 100% unpaid in 2024, but it was budgeted in 2024.
Okay, so, once again, it's not basically increasing the budget, it's just carryover.
Correct, it's just carryover, yes.
That's all.
It's just carrying it over.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second? Alderman Meroz, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed, okay. Resolution passes. Next is the bill that relates to this, 2516, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Ordinance Number 25.93, Adopting the 2025 Annual Operating Budget to Increase the Budget Expenditure for the Fiscal Year 2025 for City Park Maintenance Building Bathroom Edition. This is the first reading. If there's no other further comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, Bill 2516 passes first reading. Next, we have Resolution 2506, excuse me, 2025-06, A Resolution of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Stating Facts and Reasons for the Necessity to Amend an Increase in Budget Expenditures for the Fiscal Year 2025 for Summit Circle Drainage Improvement Project. Drew, Drew Bowman.
Mayor, members of the board. So, the, I, again, I forecasted that this project was going to be completed before the end of 2024, but there were some easement concerns from the private landowner that is associated very closely with this project. And so, those easement concerns continued through the end of 2024 and have just been recently cleared. So, we're going to be moving forward with the project. This is just carrying over the project from 2024 into 2025.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
Yeah, it really has to relate to either this one or the next bill. It's both, basically, I don't know, it relates to both. But we awarded this contract back in October. Have we verified with Four Seasons that our price is still good since we're almost four months after we awarded, and we have not started?
Yeah, I've been in contact with the contractor, and they're, they're ready to start anytime.
And they're good with the same price?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to verify.
Very good. If there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Alderman Meroz, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Next, the corresponding bill, 2517, An Ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Amending Ordinance Number 24-93, Adopting the 2025 Annual Budget Transfer Funds for Necessary Expenditures for Summit Circle Drainage Improvement Project. Do I have any other comments or questions? Or do I have a motion to approve first? I'm sorry, Alderman Osteen.
Just to clarify the public, once again, this is not increasing the budget to cover an expense. This is an expense that was not paid out in 2024.
Correct, yes.
So, basically, that is revenue that has been untouched for a project that's just carrying over.
Yes, correct.
That's all, just clarification.
Very good, thank you, Alderman Osteen. Any, anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First reading passes. Next, we have another resolution. Resolution 2025-07, A Resolution of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, Stating Facts and Reasons for the Necessity to Amend an Increase in Budget Expenditures for the Fiscal Year 2025 for the Purchase of Police Vehicles. Police chief Todd Davis, please.
Mayor, members of the board, this is a request to amend the budget to purchase three Ford interceptors that were approved during the 2025 budget, as well as one replacement vehicle that we just lost in a crash last month. The cost for the vehicles have increased from what was estimated during the budget process, and we're only gonna, also only gonna receive half of what we would receive for the vehicle that we lost in the crash last month. We'll receive an insurance settlement of $22,892, and the vehicles without equipment are $50,000. We also, in that budget line item, we will need to use, or we had to use payout, $2,217.50 for the vehicle setup of the crash, or the vehicle that we lost in the crash for the vehicle setup of the crash, or the vehicle that we lost in the crash in August of 2024. So, we need to amend our budget to 212,500, should cover the purchase of all three vehicles and equipment to put them in service. So Police Department recommends approval.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yeah, Chiefs, since we've been going back and forth with the enterprise thing so much over the past, over this whole year so far, is there no way to delay this to see how that comes back from Columbia Capital?
The order window for the, through Ford, we don't know when it can close, it could close tomorrow, or it could go another two months, we're not sure, but once it closes, then I can't order anything till next year.
Do you have any idea, if we go through with this transaction, what effect that might have on the enterprise pitch?
At this point, with not knowing the timeline that we would get anything back from Columbia Capital or anything like that, I, we need to replace these vehicles now to get them roadworthy, because if I order now, it's, I'm probably still looking at a 90 to 120 day delivery time.
City Attorney has input.
Yeah, Devin and I did speak with Columbia Capital early this week or late last week, it all burst together, and we're looking at it probably at least 60 days for them to get back to us. They are working for us quite a bit, but it's on the Oasis bonding, and that is obviously top priority, we told them that we can't slow down on that to look at cars, so it's probably gonna, they're probably not gonna be able to take a serious look at it for us until after we get the Oasis bonding done, which will be late April. So, once, once they get time, it shouldn't take too terribly long, but...
Do you don't feel like we can have enough time to wait on Columbia Capital for the vehicles?
I mean, if Chief is four months out, Columbia Capital, through no fault of their own, well, it would add another, at least I'd say two or three to that.
Okay.
Pretty easy.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Osteen.
I'm not sure to direct this question to you, but I'm just concerned, and I've been part of these discussions, on we've only received 50% of the replacement value of the vehicle?
Correct, it was a 21 model year that we lost.
Okay.
Depreciation.
In strictly depreciation?
Yep.
Okay, I was just, once again, I saw the numbers, they're not part of the conversations, and found that a little shocking.
So, so did we.
Okay, that's all.
Alderman Moros, did you have the same question?
Chief, are you anticipating, according to the vehicles that we have on hand, and the mileage and the maintenance schedule and everything, that, are we looking at buying any more this year? I mean, it's only March, I just...
This is all we have budgeted for this year, was the two.
I understand that, but...
As long as we don't lose any more.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
We just had another one hit Friday night, so we had a drunk driver hit another one.
Was it the wrong driver?
Yes.
Okay.
Luckily, it wasn't totaled.
Thank you.
Alderman Ross?
So, just to dig a little bit deeper on Alderman Osteen's question, so Chief, and I'm not sure the exact prices, I thought we were buying these vehicles for around $32,000 to $35,000, and then we were outfitting them for around 15,000 or 17,000, am I way off?
Yes, sir, you're, the, what we originally budgeted was 46,000, around 46, 47,000 for a car. That's without outfit.
Okay, and outfit runs...
And about another 20,000 a car.
So we're talking 66 per car?
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, is how is it, did they give us any, do they expect us to reuse the outfitting equipment?
Unfortunately, the, the equipment, the majority of the equipment, cages, push bumpers, et cetera, off of the 21, will not fit the 25 models, so you have to buy all new equipment.
And none of that is allowed for in the insurance settlement?
Apparently not.
Are we sure you have the right insurance company? That may not be anything anyone can answer now, but I've been through a couple total situations and never have I seen it be so low. Something, something isn't right here. I'll leave it at that for this part of it. The second question of, is approximately $94,000 extra is coming from where?
It would come from the bottom line of Fund 10.
Okay, so we feel like we can absorb that through either additional revenues or cost savings?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Barella.
Chief, is this replacement for SUVs again?
Yes.
And what would be the difference for the trucks? I just ask because I think they hold their value.
The trucks are about another, probably $4,000 to $5,000, more than the SUVs.
I think it might be worth the...
I think it would.
Difference of that.
Alderman Hoffman.
I would, we've, we've had some preliminary talks about that, and the county moved to, were they F250, F150s, I think, 150s? Chief, what's your opinion on that?
I think the utilities, I could go either way with them. The utilities, we have the inside storage versus the, we'd have to purchase a tonneau cover and lockable tonneau cover and stuff to store stuff in the bed of the truck that we store in the back now, that'd be the only difference.
Okay.
An additional cost.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Ross?
So I would just suggest that, that we've got vehicles that are out of service because of crashes and so forth, that we move forward here, but I think that we should, you know, it's not my decision, but we should consider pricing and potentially purchasing at least one and see what happens, because I do believe they're gonna hold up better from a heavier build standpoint, and they also will retain value better. Have you had any conversations with Camden County? I've noticed they've got several, have they had any good or bad luck with them?
I haven't heard either way. Highway Patrol's running them too, so...
They are? Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Alderman Rutgers.
Two things, one is, this shouldn't, this won't be an additional $94,000 to the budget because we're going to end up with at least $22,000 in new revenue, and to follow that up, I don't see, since this is a one-time revenue increase, I don't see no budget amendment to amend the budget for revenue.
We'll take, the budget amendment for the revenue will come when we get the check, so we know the exact amount. So it's forthcoming. It'll be forthcoming.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no more. Oh, another one, Alderman Osteen.
So, so the purpose of the resolution, basically, that's just giving you authorization to...
I don't understand.
Order them or price them, I'm confused on the process.
It's my understanding the resolution is for the justification why we want to do the budget amendment, which is next.
So the budget amendment would be next, then at what point will we be actually hands-on ordering the vehicles? Is that's after the budget amendment is completed?
That's the third item.
Then that's step three. So instead of passing the resolution, is it something we table or amend if we're gonna look at alternative vehicles as opposed to the three SUVs that have opposed in the resolution?
We would just have to, we would have to table these or not pass them and move forward with a different option.
I'm just, once again, just going procedural side on what's the best process to accomplish what we as a board have asked now, to look into the possibility of doing F150s as opposed to three SUVs. Looking for feedback, Cole.
I think we could amend it.
I was gonna say, yeah, if, if, if the board is not wanting to order the SUVs, then it would be to table all three items. It would, it would be, if you're going to, if you're wanting to proceed on the SUVs, then you would vote them all up. I think I understood your question correctly.
I think you understood correctly, I don't think I'm getting an answer that is making sense still. Perhaps other Alderman have questions they can ask?
The resolution and the budget amendment go together, they're, one's a prerequisite of the other, so once the resolution's passed, then you can pass the budget amendment.
But, but, but does the resolution pigeonhole us into the SUV purchase?
No, no, it, no it does not, okay, that's, sorry, if that's a question, no, it, it just authorizes the budget amendment, and then if we came back and wanted to change again, you could do, we'd do another resolution, another budget amendment, adding $5,000 a car, or whatever the number ends up being.
Okay. Alderman Hoffman?
Well, I was just gonna suggest, we might, we might table it, bring it back as a first and second, so it doesn't slow the process down for Chief, I know we don't, try not to do first and seconds, but since we're all kind of on the same page with this, just to not slow your process down, just a thought.
I thought we were just...
Alderman Rutgers.
I, I was understanding that there was just a suggestion of, of have Chief look into it, but we proceed forward with this, especially since we're, we're looking at replacing one that's wrecked and another one that just got wrecked, and that we would move forward with this, but ask him to look into the possibility of the other vehicles that the county and the state's using, that was my understanding of where, where we were going with this, and we would go ahead and approve the, approve the purchase or the procedure to get these, these vehicles purchased.
Yeah, the resolution, basically, as Cole pointed out, has to look into, we still have a first and a second reading, so any of those times, you can change, amend, or whatever, this is just to start the process, is...
Alderman Ross?
So first of all, I don't want to slow the process down, and I would have recommended that we don't look into the Ford F150s until we bought the fourth vehicle, whenever that may or may not come, but given the suggestion, I didn't realize that we were doing a first reading only, so this, the purchase requires, I want to make, get this clear, the purchase, whatever we decide to purchase, requires a first and a second reading, is that right?
It's my understanding, and Cole, correct me if I'm wrong, that the resolution is, okay, it's one thing...
Talking about the next one.
The budget amendment is a first reading tonight and second reading, and then the request to purchase, which is the third item I have, is just a motion, so that pass, that would pass tonight, I could order, and then the budget amendment comes, for the second reading comes at the next meeting.
Yeah, it, it's a little convoluted, but, but, but what Todd said is correct.
Okay. So is there anything we can do tonight to give you the ability to make an order tomorrow?
Yes, when we pass the third item...
With a truck, let's make sure I say that the right way.
With a truck? No. No.
Okay, then I don't think we should delay. We should purchase these and wait for the F150s on the next one. I think, maybe I got confused again, sorry.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Fair enough.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution passes. Next, we're gonna move on to bill 2518, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 24-93, adopting the 2025 annual operating budget, amend an increase in budget expenditures for fiscal year 2025 for the purchase of a police vehicle, our vehicles, this is the first reading. Any other comments or questions for Chief Davis? Or anyone else? Alderman Ross?
I'll just make sure I'm clear on this, if, if we approve this one, and apparently there's one behind it, because this process is confusing me, can you order vehicles tomorrow, Todd?
As long as the next item is passed, yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
And why did my screen just go dark, Todd? Oh, it's back.
Timed out.
Wow, is that what happened?
Gotta keep it active.
I keep clicking the button, I, I was...
Have to log back in.
All right, so anyway, 2518, we have a motion, a motion to approve by Alderman Ross, do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion, our bill 2518, first reading passes. Next, we have a motion, this is a motion to approve the purchase of three 2025 Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicles from Joe Manchin's Ford off the State of Missouri contract number CC240138008, for a price not to exceed $151,000. Chief Davis, anything else you want to add?
No, this is just a request to purchase the three interceptor utility vehicles, two are replacing, that were budgeted, and one is replacing a vehicle that was crashed in January. We recommend approval.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Hoffman.
Just a little clarification, Cole, we couldn't make a motion here to make it two Ford Interceptors and one F150?
No, because it wasn't on the agenda. It, no, no public notice.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Anyone else? Alderman Rutgers?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Alderman Rutgers, is there, I'm sorry? Alderman Osteen, did you second?
Nothing.
Okay, Alderman Moros, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we move on to bill 2519, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign an agreement letter, agreement with PGAV Planners LLC for an analysis of the incremental tax revenues for the Oasis at Lakeport Project in Osage Beach, Missouri, for an amount not to exceed $95,000 excluding applicable reimbursement expenses. This is the first reading, City Attorney Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board, as you recall, we have an agreement with PGAV to do the revenue study for the Oasis bonds, I believe the not to exceed on that was $55,000. And as a reminder, th, these are funds that are paid by the developer out of bond proceeds, this is not, while they are working for us, this is not tax dollars that are going to it, this is developer expense that gets passed on through, and they'll, they will actually get paid once the bonds are issued. The reason for the increase is the scope of work that we've asked from PGAV has increased significantly, you'll recall, in about, October, November of last year, we were close to ready to having the bonds ready for your approval, we actually then went back to the drawing board on some other options to, and we'll be discussing that at the next couple of board meetings. We've asked quite a bit of PGAV, and they have done everything we've asked in a timely manner, and have gotten everything done very quickly and very professionally, they did ask to increase their fee to be commensurate with the amount of work they've done, and we feel that the fee that they've requested is appropriate and fair, Mark Spikerman just walked in and he, he agrees, but they've, Lindsey and Andy at the, at PGAV have been really great to work with in a very complicated transaction, and therefore staff recommends approval.
Comments from the board, questions? Alderman Rutgers?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I understood everything that was going on here, and then with some other action that happened tonight, I'm, now I'm confused. Is, I thought this was a complete new contract, so it's not, it's, it's a, it's the other, it's the agreement we, the contract we'd had earlier, and now they need to increase it?
Yes.
From $70,000 up to $95,000? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, they've, the scope, the amount of work we've asked of them, and the scope of work we've asked of them has increased since we, since we signed the original agreement, and so we're, they have asked for their fee to be commensurate with the amount of work that they've done, and the scope of work that they've done, and so this is an amendment, this is a change order, essentially.
Okay.
We're already under contract with them, and they've, they'd already done a ton of work for us.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I guess the only thing I have procedure-wise, and we don't need to get heavy into it, but why aren't we doing a resolution like we did on the earlier ones, and to make a budget adjustment like we did on the earlier ones, and then also if we're increasing their expenditure, we're gonna increase the revenue, we need a, a, a one-time increase in revenue, so I'm, I'm in favor of this thing, but Devin, I think that needs some, maybe some more explanation that you and I, or you can give back to the board in writing or something, because why we're handling this different than we did the other things, just a couple items earlier, thank you.
The answer, the answer to your question is, this isn't a budgeted item, so this is not, there is no in and out, this actually never, this is money that never touches our hands. So, so that, so it's not in the budget, it's, they're working on our behalf, but they're paid by the developer directly.
No, sir, there's money in the budget for this, we have a line item in the budget. We have a budget line item for this, they're actually working for us under our contract.
I, I don't believe, I don't believe that's, I, we, we can look, we'll, we'll look and see after the meeting, I don't have the budget in front of me, but I don't believe, I don't believe a budget amendment is appropriate here.
All right, I'm in favor of this, but we need to discuss this later, I have some...
I'm, I'm happy to dive into it with you.
Concerns.
So.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross has motion to approve, is there a second? Alderman Barella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. First reading, bill 2519 passes. Next, we have a resolution, 202508, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, adopting the Camden County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Police Chief Todd Davis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is a, currently, we now promulgate to the Camden County Hazard Mitigation Plan, this is an updated plan, they have to update the plan every five years, this is just a new, they've updated the plan for 2025, it basically is our wish list, that if there are funds available, that we would be able to possibly apply for those grant funds for the items that are on there, this is an ongoing living document that gets revived every, or renewed every five years, we recommend approval.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Alderman Moros, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Barella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of 12 list station panels from municipal equipment company for a amount not to exceed $71,533.50 plus shipping, City Administrator Devin Lake?
So currently, our sewer department is down to three six-horse panels and three simple, three duplex and three simplex, six-horse panels, they're requesting to purchase six additional duplex and six additional simplex, so that we have them in inventory, so the total for all 12 of those is $71,533.50, and I recommend approval.
Comments or questions? Alderman Hoffman?
Now, was this budgeted, or is this an amendment to it?
Yeah, it's budgeted.
Okay.
Alderman Barella?
I think if I remember right, didn't Zach explain to us that this was a cost savings to order them like all at once, I think?
Yeah, they give us a discount.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman is second. Alderman Rutgers, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. All right, last item of business, we have a motion to approve the purchase of a cab and chassis from Premier Truck Group along with Henderson Products Equipment for an amount not to exceed $203,596. Devin Lake, please.
Members of the board, this is for a large single axle dump truck, it was budgeted, they have used these vendors before in the past, so I recommend approval, cost is $203,596.
Comments from the board, questions? Alderman Osteen?
What did we budget for the purchase of this vehicle versus the price? Because this was a budget item for 2025.
Correct, we budgeted for two dump trucks, one was for 250, the other one was for 150, and then last meeting, we did a budget amendment to cover the extra cost for these, so this is the second one.
Okay, I was just curious about the dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Ross, did you have something?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to staff communications. City Administrator Devin Lake?
The only thing I would like to say this evening is I think our employee appreciation dinner went very well, I've heard great positive comments, so that was my very first one, so I don't have anything to judge it off of, so I thought it was great, but I look for any feedback from the board or staff to help improve for next year, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Cole Bradbury? Cole Bradbury? Oh, I'm sorry. Assistant City Administrator April White?
I don't have anything.
Oh, come on. All right, how about you, Cole?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. You got all of my updates, for the most part, earlier in the day. But just wanted to thank everybody, my coworkers, for carrying water for me while I was on the beach during the last board meeting. Sorry about that. I will be out of town for the next couple of days for spring break, but I'll be back Thursday. So enjoy spring break, everybody, and stay safe.
For you? Oh, in Padre? Cancun?
Northern Virginia.
Spring break, were you?
Washington, DC.
Sure. All right.
Terrible. Just want to welcome Keegan Powers to my department. She's going to do great. I'm excited to have her. And other than that, if you have an RSVP for the mayor's dinner, please do so, if you had an invitation. Let me know what you, what you'd like.
Why are you looking at me?
Because you haven't RSVP'd yet? You have!
Check your email.
I did. Celeste hasn't. So, but other than that, yep. Other than that, I have nothing else, but thank you.
Very good. Chief Davis?
Friday, the 14th, our new officer that's in the academy right now graduates, Jordan Murray. And then his first day on the job in uniform will be the 17th on Monday, and he'll be being sworn in at 8:30 in the morning. So we invited everybody to come in to a swearing-in ceremony. Take about 10 minutes. So he'll be here. We have a new dispatcher that starts on March 15th, Ben Kanzler. He comes to us from Willcleed County. But unfortunately, we did have to let one go, and we have one that will be leaving the end of May. Her fiance is being transferred, and he's in the military, being transferred to Fort Campbell, Kentucky. So unfortunately, Melissa's going with him because they're getting married. So we're in the process of going through applica- more applications, and hopefully, we'll have another one on the, starting soon. I did survive the plunge, and thanks to Devon and Ron for coming out and judging and the chili cook-off and our parade of costumes. We raised approximately $222,000 for Special Olympics, Missouri. It's still coming in. Between, between all the events, the super plunge, the plunge, the strut, and the Pee-wee plunge, we had 240 participants. And the 18 super plungers, we raised $142,000. So out of that, out of that 222. So it was a good year. It was very cold, probably the worst that we ever had. So, but, you know, we'll do it again next year. And there's, yes, we're crazy enough. There's about 10 of us super plungers that are going to Alaska in December to participate in their plunge.
Oh.
So it's only a single.
Yeah, but it's Alaska.
Yeah. Got to go do it. You know, somebody threw the gauntlet, and you know how that goes.
Awesome.
But we'll, we'll see. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Ron White, Billingsfield?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to extend our welcome to Jeanette Gordon, who began with the Building Department as our secretary Monday, March 3rd. Jeanette comes to us from Pasco Sheriff's Office in Newport Ritchie, Florida. If you guys ever watched Live PD, that was kind of the central hub there with Chris Nocco as the sheriff there. Anyway, she was with them for about 12 years as the Executive Secretary for Investigations and the Criminal Intelligence Bureau. So if you guys see her around, if you haven't met her, stop by. Looking forward already to all that she has to offer. That's all I have.
All right. Greg Gregory, Parks?
Yeah, just as a reminder, youth league softball and baseball signups continue through next week and will end on Friday, March 14th. You can find a link to sign up online on the city website or give the Parks Office a call for more information. We'll be happy to help. Improvements continue on the Bark Park, Dog Park. We've added a few obstacles and toys for the dogs, and it continues to be extremely busy. Very surprised, even with the cold weather, you see people out there every day, just a parade. So it'll be interesting to see this summer, when it warms up consistently, how busy it gets. So we're also working with volunteer help, continue work on the disc golf course, and really hoping to have it open and playable by May. So we'll see how that goes. We're currently holding interviews for our Recreation Specialist position. Unfortunately, Patience, our former Recreation Specialist, moved on to, back home, be closer to home. And she did a great job, and we'll miss her. But we've had some outstanding interviews, and it's going to be a very difficult choice this time, so, which is not a bad thing. And we also will be interviewing for a vacant Park Tech position here in the near future, and that is all I have.
All right, thank you much. Drew Hoben?
Have a accepted offer letter for the construction inspector, so he should be starting at the end of the month. And just got done conducting the interviews for the utilities locator position. So hopefully, can get an offer letter out and be totally full up in engineering. And I think that's all I've got for right now.
All right, thank you much. Carrie Bailey, anything? Carrie Patterson?
Yes, Mayor, no Planning Commission meeting this month, but we do have one in April, so I'll send everything out for that. And then the Board of Zoning Adjustment will be meeting on the 19th of this month. So if you're interested to watch that, you know, 10 minutes of meeting, then go ahead and do that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Alderman Ross?
Yes. First of all, I want to say congratulations, even though I know we recognize, but to Mitch, when 30 years is nothing short of amazing. He's been my neighbor for 24 years, and we're just blessed to have him. Also, Keegan, for five years, but also congratulations, most importantly. It's great to see people grow in this organization and move up. Cole, your communication results lately have been phenomenal, and I just want to say thank you. It's great work. Lastly, I want to understand why we need to have a resolution and an amendment. Why can we not just do budget amendments? And if there's a great reason for it, so be it. But I don't know why we can't reduce the bureaucracy.
So this was a direction whenever we talked to Joe Lober. I experienced the exact same thing in Sedalia. You're supposed to state the reasons why you're doing the budget amendment so that you make it clear to the public and have transparency. That's what the resolution is for.
Supposed to do that according to who?
State statute.
Is that right? There's a state statute that says?
He cited it when, when we had that presentation. What was that, August, September?
Yeah, September, October, something like that.
Something like that. And he, he cited it, and I was kind of surprised at that, too.
Fair enough. I'll move on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Ross?
Yes, I don't know. For those of you that did not attend or have not heard, which I thought was wonderful, every year, the Convention Visitors Bureau has an annual membership dinner. And every year, they honor someone or some entity for partners in tourism. And last, or last Tuesday night, when the dinner was held, the Barrett Brothers of the Three Restaurants were honored partners in tourism. And I thought that was awesome. Well deserved. And I just wanted to bring it up just in case someone had not heard or read it. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Osteen?
Now it's my turn.
All right.
I've gone for one, so I've got lots to say.
Oh, no.
Obviously, in my leave of absence from the board during my father's death and the aftermath, I missed a lot of fireworks. So there's a few things I want to touch base on. I'm going to do negatives first. I just, these are items that had been previously discussed, but I wanted to circle back to them to make sure that my opinions regarding these items were of public record. So here we go. There are some recent instances of derogatory comments by elected or appointed officials from neighboring municipalities regarding the government of the City of Osage Beach. Not only do I find this both unprofessional and unethical, I feel there is no positives for making such comments other than for headlines or social media likes. We encourage feedback from the citizens we represent, and negative criticism is to be expected and is part of what makes us better. But, you walk a fine line between voicing your personal opinion and stating opinions that may be perceived as the opinion of the people or cities you represent. This type of rhetoric may be acceptable in a St. Louis versus Kansas City environment, but I do not see any positives in fostering a mentality of Lake Ozark versus Osage Beach versus Lynn Creek versus Camden, versus Greenview, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This only creates division within our municipalities. At the end of the day, we are, all of us, Lake of the Ozarks. And we should support each other, not oppose each other. That is all in that statement. My next item is regarding, I believe there is some misinformation in the public regarding the role of a representative on the Board of Aldermen. This basically goes back to what is required to hold this position. So give me a second to get on my list here. The job description for the position does state that the Board of Aldermen meets the first and third Thursday of every month. That is the basis for this position. As a member of the board, you are appointed by the mayor to a committee. Most of those committees meet once per month. So yes, that's maybe an additional meeting per month. The gotcha, though, that most of the public's not aware of, is that as a member of the board, you are also required any special sessions or closed sessions that are called by the mayor or by the Board of Aldermen. These can be quite lengthy and time-consuming as well. In fact, for the month of September, we had seven meetings. For the month of October, we had seven meetings. For the month of October, we had six meetings. So being on the Board of Aldermen is not just a meet twice a month, and there you go. It is multiple meetings that are the basis for this job. In addition to just the required meetings or anticipated meetings you should attend, there are conferences. There is an annual Local Legislators Conference reception you attend. There is a two-day conference in Jefferson City for state legislators. There is a five-day conference you attend for the Missouri Municipal League for all state legislators. In addition to that, you represent the city and its citizens. You are expected to attend local community events sponsored or hosted by our local businesses and civic organizations. You do this on behalf of the city because you are a city representative. Just this week, there was a annual Lake area Chamber of Commerce dinner. It was an award banquet, which as a member of the board, you should attend. There was a ribbon cutting today for the new Dobbs Auto Center at noon, which as basically a board member, you should attend because it's a new City of Osage business. There was a L.O. profile launch party. There was a chamber social on the Lake West Chamber. The amount of events per week is endless. And yes, you, as a board member, cannot attend all of them, but it is in your best interest to attend as many as you can to keep your finger on the pulse of the community and represent the city. So where I'm going with all of this is, not that we are looking for sympathy, but I don't think the public is aware of how much time you invest to hold this position. The reason I'm bringing this up is there's been a lot of discussion regarding the fact that as members of the board, you are entitled to receive some type of benefits to the city. Yes, that is a minor reason why you would ever want to hold this position because the amount of work that is involved far outweighs any perks you get or any money you receive to hold this position. I just wanted to clarify that to the public because there's been a lot of discussion lately regarding the fact that, how hard is it? It's twice a month meetings. No, it is way more than that. It is literally almost a full-time job. Nothing against our retirees that sit on this board currently or in the past, but if you are employed and have a full-time job, it is almost next to impossible to hold this type of position unless you are self-employed or have a flexible schedule. So it is a lot more work than people will ever comprehend. So once again, I just wanted to clarify to the public that, no, this job is not a twice-a-month meeting. It is a full-time job. That is it for my negatives this evening. Now on to the positives. I would like to commend, I have my notes here, because I've got a lot. Corporal Renner and Cannon Officer Freya. I would like to commend them on the work they've done, which we've all seen the headlines regarding the K-9 bus they've been involved with, which is, I think, tremendous considering this is a brand-new division for the city. I've already stated my comments, and, but I will reiterate once again, a huge thank you to, to our departing members of our team for the city. Zapover and Nathan Earp, thank them for their service to the city. Lastly, I would re-remiss if I didn't say, sorry, Chiefs fans, not your year. This is the show-me state, show me next year. That is all.
Alderman Hoffman?
I don't know how I feel about this following Bob Osteen in this new format. Chief, fantastic job. I heard so many great commu- uh, community members talking about how much money you guys raised out there. What a great event. Just really proud of, of our police force and, and you as the leader. The, the employee dinner was awesome. Devon, April, Matty, everyone who had a hand in that. It was fantastic. It was, I was so happy to see all the officers able to show up. You know, two years ago, I, I don't recall a single police officer being there other than maybe the chief. And it seemed like all of them were there this time. So that's just great community spirit within our organization, and it was great to see. And I did double up on blackjack pretty quick, so that was nice. Last thing is, this is just out to the public. There's just, again, more bad information, false information coming out from an individual or a couple individuals who apparently just like to stir the pot and continue to put out false information about Osage Beach. And, and I'm referencing the water heaters. I wasn't here when the water heaters were voted on. It was before my time. But I, when it became an issue on social media, I went and talked to building official Ron Wyatt. I went and talked to Cole, went and talked to Carrie, went and talked to everyone who was, who was here. And then I went and talked to the Aldermen. The permit is free, folks. You, you aren't paying anything for this permit. And it is essentially a safety inspection. It's a, it's a pressurized piece of equipment that can blow up in your house. And we have had instances where we've had problems. And yes, there is associated to that some form of an administrative warrant. Am I saying that right, Cole? It is an administrative warrant?
Yes.
And have, has the City of Osage Beach ever used one?
Nope.
Okay. And it does take a judge to authorize this warrant, correct?
Same as any other warrant.
So it's about the worst-case scenario possible. But this allows our people to do their jobs But this allows our people to do their jobs and, and keep our community and our developments safe. And it is a very common practice with other municipalities. So I would just encourage people to get the real information. Call down, talk, talk to anyone down at the city that you want. You know, building official Ron Wyatt is very approachable and quite fun to talk to, and he explains it perfectly. So if you have a real problem with it, call down and get, and get the real information. Because I didn't, I didn't know it myself, but when, after I went and took the time to learn it, if it ever came up again, I would absolutely vote for it. So that being said, I want to thank our staff for doing a great job and for everybody showing up to our dinner. And I'll pass it on to next Alderman.
Alderman Barella.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Really? Alderman Rucker.
Yes, a couple things. Number one, to follow up on Alderman Osteen. You summarized it pretty well, Bob, except forgot one little, one little thing, and that is, these, these annual, these meetings that we have take at least me, at least a half hour to an hour and a half to prepare for, prior to the meeting, because I go through the packet and everything. So there's some more time added on to the many hours you talked about already. Number two is Alderman Hoffman. I will tell you, if somebody would like to, I'd be more than happy to have them come over to my house, and I can show them firsthand of items that were done wrong on my water heater installation and were done right after the inspection was done by the city. So, and I've supported and continue to do support it. Number three, I would ask everyone to, and I believe this is a true statement on social media. I understand there's a lot of things you can't believe on social media, but I would suggest everyone look into the SEMA flood map situation that's going on. It's my understanding from the research I've done that SEMA is in the process of wanting to change the flood maps based on the fact that FEMA is pushing them based on the fact of President Biden, who shoved some things through at his tail end of his position he held as president. President Trump has changed that, my understanding. FEMA has not passed that down to SEMA, and SEMA is continuing to look at changing that. And the nutshell that I understand is we have many people within the lake area, because it does include the lake, and water tribunes off of the round lake area that would be, or could be included now in a flood plain, which means you got, it's the only place you can buy flood insurance is through the FEMA. So I just know enough to say you need to do a little more research, because what I am being told is we need to notify our state representatives and our state governor to say, hey, we think this needs to be rethought and relooked at and not moved forward the way it is. So unfortunately, I don't know just enough to, to say we all need to have more, get more information to make sure we do the right thing. Because I haven't sent any letters to my state or federal, or excuse me, state government, because I'm still making sure, or still trying to find it out. But I think it would be good for all of us to, to try to delve in and, and understand that on, on what, what may happen to us. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, and as far as going first, Alderman Ross, or going last, we're kind of switching things around, and I got that from Tara. For comments. It's kind of nice, because a lot of times when we, we start on this side, then half the stuff is already said, so we're.
Can I add one comment?
No.
Just one, just one.
Of course, yes, yes.
It ain't been the Bills year for a heck of a long time, Bob.
But, no, we switch things around for a reason, and I kind of liked that idea, and just so somebody doesn't steal your thunder. But Alderman Hoffman, I couldn't agree more. Thanks for clarifying the record, and that's one thing that I do Mayor Monday when I can. And I know Alderman Ross and Alderman Hoffman have failed in before, and I was even saying on the, on the radio Monday, the same thing, clarifying some misinformation. And we all know pretty much why that misinformation is thrown out there. But the, the water heaters have been a contention, and, and years ago, when it's been made the claim, that's what you ran on Mayor Harmon, said, well, Ron can tell you, you know, yeah, I did. But at the one time, the, they did have in there that you had to give it a permit first, and it cost, I don't know how much it was, but the, the board changed that for, it is free. And if by chance it's a Friday and the city hall's closed, go ahead and fix it, but then call Monday and come in and let them inspect it. And one thing that I think is really interesting, and, and once you do run, you learn a bit from both sides, some things you want to change, but once you get up here, you learn a little bit more. And, and one of that is the insurance. A lot of these major insurance companies require the city to sign off on, am I correct? If you have it done, they need to be inspected. So you might have a major, let's say you have a half a million dollar home, and you put in a water heater, and all of a sudden, it's not, it's not signed off on, and it blows up, burns, whatever, and the major insurance company says, well, it, it happened because your water heater was installed correctly. Show me your permit, and I did it myself. They could deny your claim, you lose your home. So point being, it's, it's for your safety, but it's also for your protection, and sometimes that's just the way it is. And I also find it interesting that, you know, a, a lot of people that live down here are transplants from wherever you came from. Google your hometown, say, hey, I'm from Des Moines, Iowa. Do you need a water permit? A lot of times, people complain that, oh my God, the City of Osage Beach makes you do that? Google your hometown, see if your own hometown makes you have a water permit. It's for a reason. And with that being said, too, it's, it's not only the insurance purposes, and when I was talking on the radio, I had one caller, and he was a developer, and he said, well, I, I intentionally don't go to Osage Beach and develop. And I said, well, I'm sorry to hear that. I said, do you know how much development is going around Osage Beach right now? You take any city around here and you look at all the development, and I have a hard time believing people are not building here because of some of the policies, because we have a lot of development, historical amount of development. So we're not here, I'm one of the worst for liking government overreach, but sometimes it's for a purpose. And so just to clarify that, that, that's the reason for that. I think, oh, another thing that's, it may appear sometimes, and I thought it was funny, because when I was listening to something, how we rubber stamp everything up here, and does it matter what it is? We just all agree on it. Well, it was kind of funny that day, I think Alderman Hoffman and I got into it pretty good that day. Alderman Ross and I get into it periodically, so tonight's not a good example, because it was a pretty easy agenda, and it was a lot of, I agree, I agree, I agree. But trust me, folks, there's many nights that we disagree. But one thing that I am proud of this board is we can have a disagreement and not go to blows, but we're all pretty, I don't know, well-spoken in our own terms. And sometimes we believe in so much, and we just, we're not going to budge. Well, but you know what? We may disagree, but when the next topic comes up, then we don't hold a grudge about the previous topic, and we, we still try to work for the betterment of the city. So I just wanted to throw that out there and clarify a couple of things. And as Alderman Osteen was saying, on a positive note, I, too, the employee appreciation dinner was excellent. So thank you to all involved. I thought the casino night was a great addition, that we had a super dealer. And I want to give a shout out to LaRoca Dance Studio. I thought that was a great venue. When we talked, I said, you know, we tried to do as much as the City of Osage Beach to do in Osage Beach, and it was Jones' Chop House Meet. Didn't they cater, is that right? Smokin' Jones? Well, shout out to Smokin' Jones, because I'm about as picky as an adult eater as they come, and I just thought it was excellent. So great venue. And then the last thing I'll say is congratulations to Nick Keegan and Officer Schwinn, because five years and 30 years, Officer Schwinn? That's just amazing. So shout out to both of them and, and appreciate your service and onward and upwards. And that's all I have tonight. We do need to move into executive session, so I need to do formalities here. I'm going to read a couple of statements. Notice is given that the agenda includes a roll call vote to close a meeting as allowed by ours resmo section 610.021, legal actions, causes of action, and litigation involving a public governmental body, body and its confidential and privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. Also, notice is given that the agenda includes a roll call vote to close the meeting for section 610.021, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. With that being said, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Mayor, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just before there's a vote, I just want to make some, make a statement, please. I should have said it during my time, but just for, everybody there in the meeting is aware of this, but the public is not. I am attending this meeting by Zoom. I'm not there in person. So just so everybody knows, I will not be in attendance at the closed session. That is not allowed by our ordinance to be in a closed session by Zoom. You have to be in, in attendance in person. So I just want to bring that up, so clarity, and so that people know that when, when the board goes into closed session, and I was a part of that ordinance when it was created, the reason we did it that way is to make sure that no business in closed session got out, other than the people that were in closed session. And so nobody could use any kind of electronic media to listen in or to be involved in what's going on in that closed session. So I just want to clarify all that and just let everybody know that that's the, the way we, we conduct business in the city. We are aware of making sure things in this closed session stay there, and so I just wanted to make that statement and make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Alderman Ross. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Marose?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
I always want to say no, but it's yes regardless.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
All right, moving into executive session. Thank you, folks.